Foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Chenoweth, would you please hold the role?
Mrs. Benz Clements?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mrs. Dolan? Mr. Gerhart?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Dr. Thompson?
Here.
And Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Okay, everyone's here, thank you for that. Mr. Miller, would you, and Dr. Bolton, do you want to first discuss Zoom meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Kraus, there obviously, thank you so much for the community members that are on the call tonight. We appreciate your interest in the board business and expressing your views. Just a reminder about Zoom, since it can be difficult, since we're not really all in the same space, we would just ask that if you are not speaking, that you would leave your computers on mute. There will be time for public comment, both at the beginning of the meeting as well at the end of the meeting, the chair will introduce those public comment times. At that point, if you have a public comment to make, please unmute yourself and just simply say, I have something to say. Wait to be recognized, because we might talk on top of each other, at that point, you will be asked to identify yourself and your municipality, so that we know who you are and where you live within the district. And then, I believe, Mr. Miller, since it's a special meeting tonight, I think you wanted to highlight a couple areas of Policy 903, before we move into the first public comment, please.
Yes, Dr. Bolton, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, again, I echo Dr. Bolton, thank you very much for the interest that the public has in the operation of the board. I just wanted to cover, as solicitor and parliamentarian, Policy 903, which regards public comment. The way we're going to do it this evening, because it's a special meeting and because there's a great deal of interest in the issue of health and safety, the first public period for comment, which comes up next, is going to be devoted solely to agenda items only, that means comment on the consent calendar, the health and safety plan, the contracts, and things like that, which are listed on the public agenda. Everyone will get, whoever wants to speak on matters on the public agenda in the first public comment section will be recognized, you will get three minutes. We will provide a period of up to 60 minutes, and we may waive that if there's interest in issues on the public agenda. We will then, and of course, every speaker must be a resident of the, according to board policy, a resident, and state law, a resident of the district. We will then have a second public comment period, it's listed on the agenda, in which any person who is a resident may speak on any issue of concern or public concern. Again, we will provide everyone with three minutes, I will be the timekeeper. If your time alarm goes off, I will simply ask you to sum up your comments, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We want everyone to have the opportunity to speak on agenda items in the first public comment section, and then on matters of concern in the second public comment section. Of course, the general rules under 903, and the general rules of public comment is, it is a public comment period under Pennsylvania law, it's not a question and answer period, it's not, you know, Prime Minister's Question Time, it's not for people to put their comments on the record. And, and we ask that everyone be, as they were last time, respectful and appropriate. All comments must be addressed to the chair, to Mr. Kraus, and not to any individual board members. And as long as we observe all of those niceties, sorry to take so long to go over them, then we'll get through this, and everyone will have a chance to be heard appropriately. So again, we're about to go into the public comment period, the one of two. This is for public comment on agenda items only, listed in your agenda tonight, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you, Dr. Bolton, for the reminder on Zoom. It's something we've become accustomed to somewhat, as we get through this. Alright, so with that, I will open it up to public comment on agenda items. Does anyone have a public comment they'd like to make on the agenda items? Give me a minute, I'm scrolling through to see if I see anybody unmuted. Karen, did you want to make a public comment? Don't see anybody unmuted. Okay, with that, going once, going twice. Alright, I will move into the consent calendar. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Items A and B.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Rice, and for the board members, we'll vote the same way we did last time, I will ask anybody opposing or abstaining. Is there anybody opposing or abstaining? Hearing none, motion passed, it's eight zero. Activities Committee, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, we have one item on the agenda for the Activities Committee. It's a motion to approve the Penrid School District Health and Safety Plan for Summer Athletics and Activities.
Seconded, seconded by myself. Questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Kraus, if I may, may I make a brief presentation regarding the content?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller, if you give me permission to share my screen, I'd appreciate it. Can I have a thumbs up if someone can see the slides? Thank you. So, the Penrid School District Health and Safety Plan for Summer Athletics and Activities is a, is one of two health and safety plans that is required by the state for schools to begin the reopening process. This is what they often call Phase One, and it is what will allow our summer athletics and other activities to begin and declare the rules as to which they can operate. The second plan that will become, obviously, later in the summer, will be for the reopening of schools, and will be specific to the plan for the first day of school. So, our Health and Safety Plan, as I said, is required by PDE. It was developed by our high school administration, led by Mr. David Bab, our athletic director, in consultation with our fall coaches, our trainers, and both the Pennsylvania and the Bucks County Departments of Health, as well as other local school districts in both Bucks and Montgomery County. You'll see, as I go through the next slides, there are three phases, those phases are two or three weeks in length, and they allow us to ease into this. All of the phases are focused on student and staff safety, and during the phases, there is an increase in conditioning, skill work, and team development. If approved tonight, the first phase will begin tomorrow and run for approximately three weeks through July 18th. On all of these phases, you'll notice that all of our summer workouts and trainings are optional and completely voluntary. The official fall season does not begin until the middle of August, and that is the time where students try out for teams. These are conditioning and skills for the team. You'll see in Phase One that only outdoor activities are allowed, and so anything that can be completed outside, where it is a little easier to social distance, will be allowed, and social distancing of at least six feet will be followed at all times. During this phase, only individual conditioning and skill development will be held. The focus will be on individual athletes. There can be group conditioning, but they will be, at least be six feet apart, if they are all doing the same conditioning. There will be no sharing of equipment in any way, and to limit the number of people that are present at any time, there will be no observers. No one outside of the coaches, the trainers, and the athletes will be involved in Phase One. We move on to Phase Two in July 19th through August 1st, assuming there's no change in the guidance at that point. Again, the workouts and trainings are optional and voluntary. This is when we will begin limited indoor activities. There are two fall sports that are indoor in nature, volleyball and water polo. And so, they will, as they can, be honoring the social distancing inside, but we will allow inside conditioning, although there are things that they obviously can do outside as well, and they will continue to do that in Phase Two if they can. Continue the focus on conditioning and skill development, but there will be small groups. Those small groups can be up to 10 individuals, where they can do drills and the limited sharing of equipment. So this is where passing to one another, shooting on a goal, those types of things that involve a small number of people will happen. Anything that is shared equipment will be frequently sanitized or traded out in intervals during the practice. Again, we will continue in this phase with no extra bodies there as observers. Assuming that everything continues to go well from a health standpoint, in the recommendation of the Bucks County Department of Health, Phase Three will begin at the beginning of August, and will run the two weeks through August 15th. Again, workouts and trainings still during this phase are optional and voluntary. Social distancing will still be emphasized, but this is the phase where contact drills and inner-squad scrimmages will be permitted. Obviously, once you get that level of close contact, there again will be frequent sanitization of all the equipment that is being used. The first official day of fall sports will be Monday, August 17th, and assuming that everything continues to go well from a health standpoint, the Phase Three rules will apply to the first official day of sports on August 17th. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton, other questions or comments from board members? Okay, so.
Mr. Kraus, I believe Mrs. Cullen, they have a question?
Yeah, so this is just specifically to the practices and not, this isn't speaking to the events, the athletic events that will take place later. I know there's some confusion amongst people in the community about whether this will apply to their children's sporting events.
So, obviously, we don't control sporting events that are outside the purview of the Penrid School District. So I do know that there are multiple community sporting events that have already begun. And so there obviously are going to be sporting events in the community that involve Penrid students, which is the confusion. There are also even sporting events that involve some, many athletes from the high school level that are involved in club, or AAU, or travel. Again, these rules do not pertain to them, and there may very well be athletic competitions, but they will not be Penrid, our teams are not in place at this point, and so they do not compete at this time. I believe there was a confusing article a couple weeks ago regarding the Penrid baseball team, and there are Penrid students who are participating in a tournament, and that's obviously their parents prerogative to be able to do that. Many of them on the Penrid baseball team, but it is not a Penrid baseball team activity. And so, obviously, there are no competitions for Penrid teams during these three phases.
Any other questions or comments for board members? Seeing none, and anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, motion passes eight zero. Finance, Mrs. Venus Clements?
Sorry, I was getting a charger, because my battery was dying. I'll make a motion to approve Contracts A through C.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac, questions or comments from board members? To be none, anybody abstaining or opposing? Hearing none, motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clements?
The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 10th.
She did announce the next committee meeting, Mr. Kraus.
Can you hear me, Dr. Bolton?
We can, Mr. Kraus, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. We have announced the next Finance Committee meeting, we're free to move on.
My internet connection's unstable, can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Okay, good, okay, so before we move into new business, I have something that, you know, I'd like to say. Comment I'd like to make. As board members, whether elected or appointed, every one of us swore an oath to support, obey, and uphold the Constitution of the United States. Can you hear me? And the Constitution of the Commonwealth. As board members, we do not surrender our constitutional rights as citizens, which are guaranteed to each of us through the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. I have remained silent until now. My mother always told me, we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. I've listened, and I continue to listen to the stories of students, past and present, learn from their experiences, and am deeply saddened to hear that any student would be treated any differently from any other student simply because of race, religion, or sexual orientation. Personally, I believe, as a district, we have a duty and a responsibility to provide a loving, safe, inclusive environment for all children to learn, grow, and thrive through a rigorous curriculum and diverse environment. I have no social media presence, and I believe these platforms, as well intentioned as they may have been, are far too often misused to sow seeds of division and hatred, with the intent of furthering the respect everyone's First Amendment right to freedom of speech, and I do not hold the same viewpoint and beliefs as some of my fellow board members. Individual board members have diverted fears on multiple topics, and that allows for heavy debate on topics affecting the district. We don't always agree, and we are, when we carefully listen.
Mr. Kraus, are you able to hear me?
He just left.
Alright, I'm going to give him a, oh, yes, Mr. Kraus.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Kraus, if you would go back to, you were saying something along, we don't always agree, and then you broke up after that.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I actually, it actually blew me off the line. We don't always agree, and we are better and stronger as a district when we carefully listen to one another, work towards consensus, and decide together what is best for the district. It is time for the
Just another reason why I can't wait till we're face to face again. Mr. Kraus, can you hear me?
Don't see everybody.
Mr. Kraus, can you hear me? We cannot hear you.
It might help if he turns off his video.
Mr. Kraus, there was a suggestion, if you shut your video, perhaps your audio will be stronger?
Okay, I'm back again, can you hear me, Dr. Bolton?
Yes.
Is there any other board member that would like to make a comment at this time?
Mr. Kraus, if it would, if it would please you, I'd like to give a sense and an update on the Diversity and Equity Work Group, would that work now?
I think that that's a good time for that, thank you, Dr. Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Over the past few meetings, I have highlighted both the past and current work the district has completed in the areas of diversity and equity. As we consider district goals for the 2020-2021 school year, this will obviously be one of our main goal areas, and I wanted to elaborate on some of the items that we'll be working on. These items are not meant to be by any means exhaustive, but I wanted to enumerate them to further indicate our commitment to this important work. The Diversity and Equity Work Group will continue to guide our efforts. During this summer and into the 2020-2021 school year, we will, number one, provide optional professional development resources to our professional staff over the summer, provide mandatory professional development to all staff in the fall, examine our mission, vision, and belief statements to make sure they appropriately address our commitment to diversity and equity for all students and all staff. We will expand our Diversity and Equity Work Group to include parent and student representatives. We will conduct an internal diversity audit of our English and social studies curriculum. Working within current safety protocols, we will hold a community forum during the 2020-21 school year to encourage education and conversation regarding our entire community on the areas of diversity and equity, and continue our attempts to promote and attract additional diverse candidates to the Penrid School District through our promotional materials and our efforts with expanded job fairs. And as I said, the Diversity and Equity Work Group will continue to guide those efforts as we work on those goals as well as others. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. Other board members who would like to make a comment at this time? Let's see. Joan, hold one second, Mrs. Walters, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Joan can speak first.
Okay, alright, Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. Okay, I want to provide a follow-up to what was mentioned at our previous meeting. I have information which I'm going to send to Ms. Chenoweth to put into the record tonight, but first, I do want to talk a bit about what is being provided. In the marketplace of ideas, no one is granted a monopoly. For any society to function well and in a fair way for all people, diversity of thought must be welcomed. Over the last couple of weeks, words like hateful and ignorant were used to describe a perspective which goes against the mainstream narrative. Those who hold this point of view have been denigrated and ridiculed. There are many scholars, prominent citizens, and ordinary people of all ages, races, genders, and orientations, included in the segment of the population in question. But in the interest of time, I'm just going to talk about one, because it so happens that his birthday is tomorrow. Dr. Thomas Sowell is a well-respected and renowned professor of economics. He has degrees from Harvard, Columbia, and the University of Chicago. He's a senior fellow at the Hoover Institution at Stanford University, and has taught at many of our country's best schools. He is also a prolific author, of whom fellow prominent economist, professor, author, and columnist Walter E. Williams said, quote, "My colleague not only writes when you and I are asleep or enjoying ourselves, but he might write with two hands." In short, Dr. Sowell's formal education and commitment to lifelong learning and educating others is not in doubt, and he certainly could never be described as ignorant. But there's more to being a well-informed person than just acquiring a formal education. In that regard, Thomas Sowell has had a lot of experiences from which to build his worldview. He was born on June 30th, 1930, in North Carolina. He grew up in Harlem. By virtue of his being on this earth for 90 years, he has lived and observed enough to hold a well-informed point of view. He lived through the Depression, and in a country that was segregated. He witnessed citizens of the United States come together to fight an evil which was ravaging the globe during World War II. He dropped out of high school and was drafted into the Marine Corps. He saw the National Guard deployed so a little girl could go to school. He witnessed the fight for civil rights and the filibuster against it by Al Gore Senior. He has seen the ugly in this nation, the progress we've made, and he still believes in the overall good. As I said, Dr. Sowell is far from alone in holding his perspective, which is one that challenges the mainstream thinking. It doesn't deny the existence of many kinds of discrimination at all. It disputes the degree to which it is institutional and the degree of its pervasiveness. It's a view that perhaps makes people confront uncomfortable thoughts on the causes of struggles and potential solutions. So there's an effort to marginalize him and others who share his perspective. We see this happen all over, including on the floor of the US Senate, where just last week Senator Tim Scott of South Carolina's landmark legislation was derisively mocked as a, quote, "token", and blocked from even being brought to the floor for debate. I also saw it myself, when a friend offered a well-fought-out civil comment on critical race theory, and he was immediately doxxed, called a, quote, "person of color" that Joan Cullen is paying, and had his background information posted to social media in an effort to discredit, humiliate, and silence him. The attack was breathtaking in its swiftness and viciousness. It was done to silence a person who dares to think differently. Why? How can anyone credibly claim to welcome open discourse when one point of view is to be declared, to be declared flat-out wrong and eliminated before any conversation is had? It would be horribly ironic if Penrid, which has a speech and debate team that regularly dominates its field, would set a precedent of squelching academic discourse. I don't expect any person to agree with 100% of anything anyone presents. However, as a resident of this community, a parent, a school board member, and a former educator, I will insist that every perspective be shared without fear of punishment, so our students can think critically and form their own opinions, rather than merely absorb and regurgitate a predetermined conclusion. I am an educated woman, an informed and engaged citizen. My point of view is not ignorant nor hateful. The perspective I present is shared by many well-educated, well-respected, knowledgeable individuals. I am familiar with the 1619 Project. I'm also familiar with the 1776 Unites Project. I have listened to the heartbreaking experiences people of color in my community and across the country have had with regard to racism. I have also witnessed a dear friend be attacked for expressing his diverse opinion. I don't present this information because I presume to speak for anyone. I present it so it can speak for itself. Therefore, I am respectfully submitting this on behalf of myself and many others in this community, not for back-and-forth email debating, but for the school district to consider during any process to develop curriculum and programming for its students and families. Thank you, and Ms. Chenoweth, I will be emailing that to you shortly.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Mrs. Walters? I think you were up next, Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, can everybody hear me? Okay, alright, I know there have been members of this community that have been requesting that the board make a statement in regards to Mrs. Cullen's tweets. Let me first begin by saying that everyone sitting up here is an individual and responsible for their own actions. I have always strived to work well with every individual on this school board, and I have always voted my conscience. As a team, sometimes we agree on an issue, and sometimes we don't agree. We, but we have always respected each other's input, vote, and then we move on. That was not the case when I started my term on the school board in December 2017. The board was heavily divided. It was not a good working environment, and I did not appreciate the way in which other former board members publicly attacked others over personal issues and opinions. Unfortunately, even after leaving the school board, some of them continue to insert themselves and craft controversy on social media and in the community. It's become very obvious to me that the social media pages targeting the school board do not exist because they actually care about improving the school district. They exist only to attack individuals that the administration of those pages simply do not like. It's dirty politics, plain and simple, and I'm tired of it. So when I saw a screenshot of Mrs. Cullen's Twitter, I made a choice to be patient and work through my thoughts. I wanted Mrs. Cullen to have the time to process and respond to the community how she saw fit, because these are her actions, not mine. Additionally, I wanted to speak with Mrs. Cullen and understand her perspective further, because I believe we, as a district, as a community, as a nation, will get nowhere on difficult topics if we don't learn how to have honest conversations with people we disagree with. The discussion of racism is a layered topic. It is difficult to sum up all of one's thoughts and opinions and knowledge and experience on such a topic in a few lines on a social media post. I feel Mrs. Cullen's tweet appears very one-sided and has offended members of our community, which is affecting their trust in our ability to serve. I also do not agree with the manner in which her tweet was presented nearly a year after it was posted. It was done so to stir up trouble. Mrs. Cullen is heavily involved and dedicated to a multitude of things in our community. Like all of us, she has opinions. However, I also feel you have, I'm sorry, like all of us, she has opinions, and I fully believe she has a First Amendment right to express those opinions. However, I also feel you have a responsibility to express those opinions in a more inclusive manner when holding a leadership role. I did not support Mrs. Cullen for Vice President at our reorganization meeting in December, but she and I continued to have a positive working relationship after that vote. This is a perfect example of how this current board differs from the board I was sworn into in late 2017. We may personally disagree, but we will move forward and continue to focus on what is best for our students, our teachers in the district. I do not think Mrs. Cullen should resign from being a school board director, but my personal opinion is that she should step down from her role as Vice President. I hope that in time, Mrs. Cullen is able to have a conversations and build relationships with the people that she has offended. In closing, I believe in First Amendment rights, accountability, responsibility, forgiveness, and grace. These past few months have been difficult and stressful. We went from school closure We went from school closings to mask-wearing and businesses closing, to the murder of George Floyd, to protests and everyone arguing and telling each other how to think and behave on social media. I'm going to be very honest and say that the world feels really heavy and overwhelming for me at the moment. A family member suggested that I not share that I've been overly emotional lately because they didn't want me to appear weak. But I am sharing it because I want the community to realize that the people that sit on this school board are human. We aren't emotionless robots. We have empathy and we care. I had a friend tell me last week, as I was pouring out all that I'd been carrying lately, Lisa, I know the world is difficult and you don't have an immediate solution, but one day you'll look back and say that you were part of making things better. I am dedicated to listening and growing together as a community with the concerns that are brought before us, and I have faith in my fellow board members that we will step forward in the same manner together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walters. Is there any other board member who would like to say something at this time?
I see Dr. Thompson raising her hand, Mr. Kraus.
Dr. Thompson, okay, you're on a different screen, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I am compelled to make the statement because there are members of the community that wish to hear the perspectives of the other board members as it relates to the call for a resignation for Joan Cullen and apparently also for her to willingly resign her position as Vice President. So I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. It is instructive that both these constitutions have as their first enumerated right a guarantee of freedom of expression for all individuals. Making the choice to serve your community as a school board director does not strip you of those rights. I think that every citizen has the right to speak on matters of public concern. Conversely, I think that people have the right to criticize a speaker's viewpoint. I think that some expressions made in juxtaposition of a political movement will inevitably be perceived as inflammatory or hateful, even when there is a lack of evidence to the same. And I think that every citizen that is willing to speak up also has the right to disagree with any consensus or major viewpoint at any time. And I will defend the right of any board member or student or staff member that wishes to engage in protected expression. So as I see it, if you take an oath to uphold the Constitution and the protection it affords, you cannot also punish someone for exercising their constitutional rights. I understand that there are members of this community that wish for this board to exact a price and a punishment for the individual viewpoints of Mrs. Joan Cullen that she expressed outside of her official capacity a year ago. If this reflexive impulse to punish Mrs. Cullen were permitted, then it would inevitably and ultimately result in policy formation on individual self-expression for board members, employees, and students. Policies that monitor, review, examine, and penalize expressions of thought would directly undermine all of our constitutional rights. That would be an unintended consequence of an action based on public outcry, rather than to heed our duty to allow self-expression and where necessary even defend it. It is our duty to uphold the Constitution within our official capacities, and why you as the community members have entrusted us to do so. In fact, more than seven thousand community members entrusted Mrs. Joan Cullen, who had the highest number of votes overall, to defend the Constitution and the protection it affords. And I feel I must reiterate that school board directors are not stripped of those rights themselves, but in fact, work diligently to separate their personal freedoms of expression from the venue of the school district. That I am even compelled to make the statement would indicate that some community members, and not Mrs. Joan Cullen herself, have attempted to blur these lines and distract attention from the actual good work that we do here as board members. And as for my colleague, I encourage you to look at the actual record of her service on the board. That's what I evaluate. And by that standard, Mrs. Joan Cullen has been supportive of this board and this community. She has put the district, the staff, and the students first. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Mrs. Baynes Clemens, I think you indicated you would like to say something.
Thank you. From my perspective, board members have the right to say what they want on social media, but have the responsibility not to. We have to be open-minded and remain impartial without alienating members of the community and inviting controversy to the district. We also have to be cognizant of how our words impact students, staff, and families and lead by example. Everything we say and do reflects on our colleagues and the district as a whole, especially when serving in a leadership role on the board, where your voice is meant to represent your colleagues. For that reason, I voted accordingly on who should serve in leadership roles back in the fall. But each of us has our own opinions and standards that guide our decisions. Recent events have struck a chord with families who continue to experience discrimination. Though it's incredibly disheartening to hear their personal stories, they are driving the difficult conversations to ensure that here in Pen Ridge, we are doing everything we can to secure a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment where every student feels valued and accepted. The Pen Ridge School District has zero tolerance for racism and condemns all hate speech. Over the past few weeks, I have been having those difficult conversations with families. I have heard from a woman of color who was discouraged from going to college because she was told she wasn't the college type, who had the police called on her family at a local park in a suspicious person's report. I heard from a young, from a young, excuse me, from young women who were teased for their looks and their hair and referred to with racial slurs, from a black man who was taught how to get pulled over without making anyone think he was a threat, who was treated differently depending on how he dresses. I have heard from the daughter of a police officer, who has to hold back her feelings as other kids continue to bash police officers, knowing her father risks his life every day to protect people and would never do the kinds of things people are talking about on TV, knowing he has to watch where he parks when he goes to work because people are going through the police department parking lot, taking pictures of private vehicles, tracking down where they live so they can dox them and put their families in danger, knowing they had to remove all the Fraternal Order of Police stickers on their vehicles so they aren't targeted. None of these things are okay. We are being divided over things we all agree on. Hate and violence of any kind is wrong and needs to be condemned, and we need to do our part to prevent what we can and hold accountable what we cannot. We cannot control the rest of the world. But here in Pen Ridge, we can leave the politics at the door and work together to set the standard on how we treat one another. A mom shared the story of when her daughter was a three-year-old little girl who came home from preschool upset when nobody wanted to use the black crayon because they thought it was an ugly color, and it made her think they must not like her because she is that color. I also heard about a sixth-grade teacher from Dibler, Mr. Arnold, who has since passed away, who gave extra credit to the student in his class who used a black crayon to add diversity to his picture for class. After that, many of his students started adding color to the people in their pictures as well. One of those students grew up to teach at a daycare. To this day, when her students are coloring a picture with people, she puts out a range of colors to represent all different complexions in their pictures and admire the diversity it represents. That teacher is my sister. Imagine if the little girl in the story I shared was in that class, how much more valued she would have felt. In education, little things we do every day have a significant impact on the students we teach. One of my conversations was with a woman of color I grew up with here in Pen Ridge. It was enlightening to hear the different perspective of growing up in the same district through her eyes and the eyes of her sisters. One of her sisters and I were really close, were really close growing up. We built a bridge across a creek in the woods by my parents' house and called it our secret place. Of course, we didn't have STEM back then, so our bridge was not comparable to the kind of bridge our students would make today. Let's build a bridge and bring this community together. I invite any of you who want to share experiences and have the difficult conversations to work together and make Pen Ridge the best district it can be. To reach out to me, I would be happy to sit down with you. Many community members have a genuine desire to have the difficult conversations, but let's not kid ourselves, we aren't calling them difficult conversations for no reason. We move forward by sharing differing experiences and perspectives in an open and honest way, not by silencing those we disagree with.
Baynes Clemens, thank you. Any other board members would like to make this statement?
Yeah, if I can, though, Mr. Kraus?
Yes, Mr. Gerhart.
All right, I just wanted to begin by saying that I know a lot of you, a lot of people here don't know me, and unlike many other board members and people here at this meeting, I did not grow up in the Pen Ridge community. I moved to this community in two thousand and eleven and decided to start and raise a family here. I decided to run for school board director last year as I wanted to be a part of this community, hoping to be able to make a difference and helping the children in this community have the best education possible. By voting me into this position, you have entrusted me to help make decisions that will affect the education that your children receive and how we view education as a whole in this community. It is a position that I take very seriously, and I can assure you that I will exhaust every resource possible to make informed and smart decisions. There has been a lot of discussion in our community about the issues that our district and nation are currently facing, and I want to apologize for my delay in making my own statement. There have been many people that have voiced their concerns and questions through email to the school board as well as through public comment at these meetings, and I appreciate every single comment, email, and concern brought to the attention to the board. It is very encouraging that there are so many people invested in this community and what they believe in. I have responded to some of the emails and engaged in conversations with community members, and I appreciate each and every discussion. As a member of this community and a member of this board, I will do whatever is needed to ensure that racism, hate, and violence have no part of our district. I will never know what it's like to face the challenges that the black and other minority communities face. However, to not speak up and address acts of racism and racism and hate is unacceptable. I am an ally to all students, and I will support students and this community in any way that I can. I do not pretend to be an expert on the issues that our nation and community are currently facing, but I am actively educating myself and feel that action is needed to address these issues. I'm committed to inclusion and equality in our district, and I believe progress begins with communication, discussion, and education. Having diverse views and perspectives in the decision-making process will only benefit us. This is something that I am committed to, and I hope to work with our community members to help us drive change and stand up for what is right for our students and community. I believe that there are racial disparities embedded into our society, and even though people may have the best intentions, these disparities still exist. I will always stand firm in my belief that hate, racism, and violence simply have no place in Pen Ridge, and I will work with anyone regardless of their viewpoints in order to move this district in a positive direction. I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen, and I hope you understand that I am certainly not perfect, but I always do my best to do what is right for our students and community. I genuinely appreciate everyone that has voiced their concerns and reached out to the board. Your dedication and drive for change is enviable and what is needed. This is how we do come together as a community to make it better for everyone, and we will come out of this better. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Gerhart. Mr. Rice, did you want to make a comment?
Yep, I just want to appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate everybody, every board member that was able to speak tonight, give their words of encouragement. Every single word they say is very important in this conversation. I'm gonna, I ingest everything I believe in a lot of those words that were spoken this evening. I just want to let you know that as part of the board, growing up here, raised my kids here, being a resident since nineteen sixty-nine, so I've been around for a long time, and I love this community, and I wish to be part of the conversation and the solution to make sure that everybody is included and everybody is meant to feel important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Cormac, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Kraus, just a couple of words. Just kind of echo the same comments that Mr. Rice had, is that I've been a member of this community for thirty years. Three children grew up in this community, went through the Pen Ridge School District. One advanced education, one regular education, and a special ed student. I've seen all sides of the educational process. My wife and I are dedicated to look at the special education community and work with them. One of the reasons I came on the board was to work with the existing board members who had made a conscious effort to control tax dollars on providing a quality education. That was one of the main reasons why I wanted to get on board. Number two was I wanted to make sure that every student had a quality education that could lead them into the future. As to looking at the pandemic and what's gone on with Black Lives Matters, I just want to say that my field is in economic development. We provide low-cost financing to business and industry. I don't see color. I don't see color at all. Part of my issue is I see black and white, which happens to be on a spreadsheet. So I don't get involved in that process. Again, one of my mentors had told me a long time ago, if the individual has good character and they can pay back their debt service, they get a loan. I look at it this way. We have a community that is moving in a right direction. We've got an administration that understands where it needs to go and has put processes in place prior to any of the discussions we've had in the last three, three or four weeks. So I say that this community is geared up, ready to move forward. We need to be thinking positively at how to get out of this so-called pandemic from the standpoint of looking at the existing programs, working with the existing leadership, and moving forward. I believe that we need to be able to move forward. And our future is not our past, but our future, and I think we all can provide enough information to make our future the best that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cormac. And I believe I've heard from all board members now. Okay, and with that, I'm going to move on to new business. Is there any new business?
Mr. Kraus, one moment, I think, Ms. Cullen.
Huh? I'm sorry, I didn't see you there, Mrs. Cullen.
That's okay. I do want to just point out that in addition to hearing the stories of people, there is a lot of email and even an anonymous letter that was written in support. We've received a lot of supportive comments from members of the community who would like to see a robust discussion take place. And so to the point of saying that a leadership position should be, you know, revoked or sacrificed for expressing an opinion that is supported in the community amongst many people, to me would send a message that, again, that this is something that's not acceptable to be voiced in the Pen Ridge School District. And that could have consequences for our students down the road because, as you can imagine, it could very well not stop here. A student could find himself or herself in the position of being asked to revoke a leadership position on a team or in some organization because of a political belief that they expressed elsewhere. And I would, you know, I agree with the concept of leaving your politics at the door. I think as Dr. Thompson said, if you look at my record, I have always stood for all students in this community, always, and I always will. And I am the one who is saying, let's hear all voices. Hearing all voices is the only way to have a truly honest and open conversation and make the kind of progress that we want to make. So that's all I want to add, that there was an awful lot of support to coming from community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Okay, moving on to new business. Is there any new business?
Yeah.
Mr. Gerhart, you are unmuted, okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Kraus. In light of everything that has gone on, the recent events, discussion, and concerns, you know, that many of the community members have raised, it's pretty apparent to me that many people in this community are losing faith in us as a school board and is questioning our ability to lead this district as we are currently organized. For me, I think we're all in agreement that this is not a First Amendment issue, and for me, it's not. For me, it's accountability and the way we respond to criticism and other viewpoints. All of us have been called upon to listen to the concerns expressed in our, being expressed in our community, be objective, and find the best way for us to move forward. We all must be held accountable for our actions, and when our objectivity is compromised, whether implicit or intentional, we must call for change. I feel that the best way for us to move forward as a community and a district is to have Ms. Cullen replaced in her, of her leadership positions, and I would like to make a motion for the removal of Ms. Cullen as Vice President and to no longer be the Chair of the Curriculum Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gerhart, is there a second to that motion?
I will second.
Mr. Kraus, by Mrs. Walters. Yes, Mr. Miller?
Mr. Kraus?
Mr. Kraus, as there's been a motion and a second, and that motion is in order, it seems to me that under Section 710 of the Sunshine Act, that if we add to the agenda that residents are, should have the opportunity to comment on the agenda item prior to the vote. So I would ask the board to move the public comment that follows new business up to this point, take public comment so that the vote will be in order, and when public comment is over, then the board can proceed on the motion on the floor, including comments from board members, and that way we will satisfy the Sunshine Act. And so saying this, I want to remind everyone in the audience to, if you wish to make public comments, you will get three minutes. I will keep the time. Everyone will get three minutes, and when you get to the end of your three minutes, if you haven't finished, I will ask you to please suspend and allow everyone else the chance to speak. In addition, in speaking, you must first announce where you're from in the district, and only residents of the district are permitted under the rules to speak. The all comments must be directed to Mr. Kraus as board chair. It's comments only and not question and answer. That's the format of public comment. And please be patient with the parliamentarian slash umpire slash referee as I recycle my timekeeping device, and Mr. Kraus recognizes you. There's a lot of people who are currently logged in. So, Mr. Kraus, with that admonition, gentle though it is, I would ask you to consider doing public comment at this point.
Okay. So, give me one, one. At this time, I will open it up to public comment, and the first comment I see is Ms. Thomas.
Hi, I'm Alexis Thomas. I am a Sellersville resident. I grew up here in Sellersville. One thing, definitely one thing I don't like that was stated, a lot of people say this just thinking that it's the right thing to say, is I don't see color. We all see color. Like, I obviously grew up in this area. People saw my color. And since a lot of people said that they've, you know, heard stories of people in the community, and since we did invite people to come out of the board and nobody did, we had two people of the board last minute canceled, I'm going to tell you my story. So, like I said, I went to Dibler. The first thing was first grade. I got made fun of because I have a white mother and a black father. So that's one. Third grade, got told I had to drink from a different water fountain. And the crazy thing is, nothing to these students were ever done. Fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, I've been called a nigger. I have been told in the hallway, white power. There has been racial slurs written on the rocks. Like, this is unbelievable that it has been now 17 years since I left the school. I dropped out when I was 15 because of all the racial discrimination going on in the school and nothing being done about it. Really, that's all I have to say. I obviously believe that Joan Cullen definitely should resign. She doesn't believe in systemic racism, but, I mean, I have sent her videos, where there are little children videos, which you can watch, that literally will explain it to you. I just think that it's, it's just sad that this is what our community has come to, and it's obviously been going on longer than 17 years, to hear the stories of little kids just this year being called dirt, and still, nothing has been done. And that blows my mind. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for sharing, Ms. Thomas. So I'm looking to see who is unmuted. Please bear with me, because I have to scroll through the screens.
I'd like to speak if I have a moment.
Yes, and that's Holly LaBelle.
Oh, her husband, Eric. Eric, thank you. I would like to second Ms. Thomas's statement that...
Sir, sir, could you just identify where you're from? Your time hasn't started.
Sellersville, my wife and I both are current residents, and one of our children, who is a person of color, attends one of your schools.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. So, I know that Ms. Thomas, I'm sure, has invited you, as well as my wife and I, to join us for peaceful protests and discussions that you seemingly would like to attend and take part in, but none of you have deemed it necessary or worthy of your time. And if you had attended any of these, you would have heard story after story from just teenagers, young twenties, of what they dealt with in your system currently and recently. And Ms. Cullen's statement is very dangerous to future generations. It is my opinion, as well as my wife's, that she is not fit to raise future generations in an even and equal manner. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. And bear with me, Ms. Kramer?
Yes, thank you. My name's Jane Kramer. I'm a resident of Leaning Glen and a mother of a child of color that will be entering Pen Ridge School District in the fall, hopefully, depending on COVID. I would like to express my concern for the lack of urgency that I'm hearing from the board. The school district already has some consultants that are working with them on issues of diversity and inclusion. There's already a group, so I would really urge the board to pull together a community forum before the school year starts. This is not an issue that can wait. You can hear from, you know, people that have shared their personal experiences as former students of Pen Ridge School District, that it can't stand. I can't have my daughter go through that same experience. And I'm, I just don't hear the urgency from this board. I hear, oh, we, we, we're going to do some training, we're going to do some, some things, but you have a community that is ready, willing, and able, and has lived experience, but also professional experience that they can bring to the table to help move this issue forward. I'm a master's level social worker. I've conducted diversity training, and I offer myself as someone to serve the district. I've offered to volunteer, again, three years ago, I reached out to Dr. Rattigan and was suddenly, was dismissed. So I just really urge the board to take this issue seriously, to not wait, because the longer that, that the board waits, the more the distrust is going to grow. And based on the social media of one of the board members, there's a lot of distrust at this point. And, you know, we, we need a real forum, we need details about what the trainings are that the teachers are experiencing. We need details, and we need them now. So I agree with other citizens that Ms. Cullen is not suitable to lead in the school board and should resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Ms., is that Bidelion?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Kim Bidelion. I live in Percasie Borough. Two grown children went through Pen Ridge. I have two grandchildren that will be going into Pen Ridge in the next few years. I just want to say that I support Joan Cullen. I've seen her on Facebook as a board member at every function, supporting the school, being a cheerleader, being a champion for students, champion for teachers, for innovation, for financial responsibility. I think that there is a political movement going on, that it's sort of in vogue right They should be doing what is educating children and leave the social justice type of things that are going on outside, politically, outside the school, maybe in the high school level, speaking of it in more of a current event matter, but to say there's systemic racism is a whole can of worms that starts with top down. And I do not believe that this administration, that, that, that these teachers, that this school board is racist or wants to keep black children down or minorities unequal. I think that this is just something that's kind of being brought up to divide this community. I think we need unity in this community. We grew up knowing that it's wrong to call people names, but children do it. It's the way, you know, kids are, they can, they can be tough, and individually, they need to be spoken to. We need to teach each other to be kind, to be considerate, to understand people have different backgrounds, different abilities, and they can, that can be generally taught. I do not think that we need some sort of diversity education in the school system right now. I think this is a political hack job, honestly. I think that everybody is going after Joan Cullen because she is a strong member of the community, and I think this is just a way to disenfranchise the people that voted for her. The majority in Pen Ridge who voted for Joan Cullen want Joan Cullen to remain in her position. That's what she was voted for, that's what she's doing, and that's what we didn't want her to continue doing. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Ms. Bidelion. Mr. Kay?
Yes, good, good evening, everyone. Dante King, Hilltown Township. I have two children in, at Siler. So, I, I, I'm going to just say this to, I'm going to say this to everyone, you know, I think the, 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 our focus is in the wrong place, right? Our focus is on Ms. Cullen. And, you know, I've heard a lot of things, and you know what? She has the right to say what she wants to say. I mean, that's her, that's her right. It's her First Amendment right. I'm with that. What I'm not with is the lack of accountability that is being held, right? Young lady just spoke about systematic racism, political hat job in vogue. I've been black for 43 years. I've experienced racism in this community. My eight-year-old daughter has experienced racism in this community, systematic or not, it's still racism. The fact that we're saying that we don't need diversity in training in school? Why? And the gentleman said he doesn't see color? I'm black. I can't, I can't take this off. I can't shake that. My daughter can't shake it. My other daughter can't shake it. My wife can't shake it, right? Half this, 1.5% of this, excuse me, 3% of this community can't shake the fact that they're black, brown, or Asian, or Indian. They, they can't shake that. And they have experienced some, again, they have experienced some traumatic pain. This young lady just told us that she dropped out of school. Where was her support at? Where was her support? What were you doing as a school district? She dropped out of school at 17, or 15, because she was being teased. But if she were white, oh, it'd be a different story, it'd be bullying, it'd be all on the front news, but she was a minority, and it wasn't handled appropriately. So again, I'm not worried about Ms. Cullen being on the board or not. You know what? We can let, we can let, we can, we can vote her out if you really want to vote her out. That's not my ire. What my, my focus is, is we need to get it back to the children, and the children need to have a diversity committee. They need to have, and again, to me, special committee shouldn't have been about COVID. It should have been about this. It should have been about what are we going to do to move forward with this? Again, politics aside, I'm not getting into politics, but I will say this much. To deny that I'm black, to deny that you don't see that I'm black, then you're lying. To deny that there is no racism, discrimination, you're a liar. You're all lies, if you don't believe that. And all I'm saying to you right now is, if we don't put the children first, and if nothing gets done from the school board, my voice, the voice of the minority, the voice of the people that aren't being heard, will be amplified. And guess what I don't want? This little, this little conversation that we're having right now to be magnified in the national news, so that now Percasie is being seen as maybe a neighborhood you don't want to live in. Are you?
Thank you, Mr. Kay. All right.
I have a comment.
Who do I have? Is that, yeah, the Allos?
Ms. Bayalos? Close, it's, it's Bayalos.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's right, it's really hard. I couldn't say it when I met my husband either.
Okay.
Okay.
Your municipality, please, Ms. Bayalos?
I'm sorry?
Your municipality, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Maggie Bayalos, and I live in Hilltown Township. I am actually myself an educator. I'm a special ed teacher at Sauterston High School, and my daughter will be starting, my oldest daughter will be starting kindergarten at Siler in the fall, and then I have another that will be starting in. I am very proud that someone finally said publicly that Joan needed to be removed from her position, not on the board. I understand that she was voted in, but I don't think that someone that has publicly shared her views, such as they are, should be the vice president and should be in charge of choosing curriculum. I believe that I heard that there is a new social studies curriculum that needs to be chosen this year, and I think this is a great opportunity to choose an anti-racist curriculum. I'm going to be pushing the school district that I work in to be, hopefully, whenever theirs is up, to be choosing that type of curriculum as well. I 100% believe that we need diversity education in this school district, particularly for the reason that we are not ethnically diverse. We, our children are growing up in this area where I believe that, other man said that only 3% of the children here are black. That's not going to be necessarily where they end up. They're not going to maybe go to a college where 97% of the people are not black. So we need to teach them the right things to do and the right things to say and the right way to be an anti-racist person. I respect Pen Ridge School District. My husband and his sister both went through this school district, and I think that they are excellent people and good citizens, but I know that we can do better, and I know that we need to keep going forward, and I 100% support the removal of Joan Cullen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bayalos. Are there other comments from the public?
I'd like to speak.
Ms. Levin?
Yes, hi.
The first one I saw, so.
Yes, Danielle Levin, West Rock Hill. I am in full support of the resignation of Joan Cullen. I graduated in the class of 2016. I was in student council, and I was a former representative for the school board, and I think that the things that she said, along with the things that other community members have said, such as that the school shouldn't have to provide diversity training, is ridiculous. I am a recent graduate from college, and I needed to educate myself on these things, and I feel like it was the Pen Ridge High School's fault that I wasn't taught more about diversity prior and that I was needing to teach myself. I believe that as an older sibling of two siblings who go to the high school, I want them to get that best education, and I feel like currently they're not getting it. And I've had many friends who have been through the Pen Ridge system who have needed to drop out or failed out because they were not getting the racial support that they needed. And that is my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Levin. Other comments?
I'd like to speak.
Bethany, please?
Yes, my name is Bethany Schwandy. I'm in Percasie Borough. First of all, I wanted to state that I, Bethany Schwandy, support the motion to remove Joan Cullen from her position as vice president on the school board and her position as director of the curriculum committee, should she not be removed completely. I would also like to share a story. I am an educator myself. I work in a local school, which does a lot of anti-racism work currently. However, because that is a part-time position, I also subbed as a Pen Ridge school director, Pen Ridge substitute teacher the past two years, and I would like to share that in the last school year, as a substitute for, at Pen Ridge High School, I was brought in when I, when I took a job, and brought into the principal at the time, and I understand that she's not there. and brought into the principal at the time, and I understand that she's not there now, and was asked about questions that were asked to me by students in an AP English class the day after the 2018 midterm elections. Because I was asked directly by students, because they were doing their work and wanted to have a conversation, I did mention that I felt that the election in Georgia was not fair and was a clear evidence of voter suppression and that I felt Stacey Abrams was robbed. This was a conversation brought to me by students. At no point did I say anybody's position was invalid. I was brought in at the next time, and I was told, I'm not, I can tell that you're not from around here. No, I attended all through Pen Ridge. Oh, you're not from around here, clearly. You know that we have a conservative school body. You are not to speak about politics to students. That is our school district policy. Now, one, substitutes are not district employees. I understand we're not in there to go in and rile things up. That was not the intent. I was addressing questions asked to me by an advanced placement class. There are plenty of things that the students tell the substitutes that are well beyond outside of the realm of appropriate behavior, day in and day out. And I did that for two years. So I would just like to state that maybe we can talk about this at the level of high school is completely ridiculous. These conversations need to be had from the very entrance into the school district. I am thankful that this administration has changed. I look forward to the movements forward that Dr. Bolton have pushed. But I did want to share that story to know. Thank you. I yield my time, but I would like to give my husband a chance to speak.
May I continue or take my time?
Sir, you're in order. Go ahead. You have your three minutes. Please name and the...
My name is Steven Schwendy. I am a resident of Percacy Borough, and I have three children in the Pen Ridge School District. I think it has become clear over the course of all of the stories that we have heard, recent as it may be that we've heard them, but long is the time over which they've taken place. The Pen Ridge School District is a vehicle of institutional racism. It is necessary for us to acknowledge this and to work to improve and eliminate that status. A key first step in doing that would be for Joan Cullen to be removed from her position as vice president of the school board and to be taken far, far away from anything having to do with curriculum and such. She clearly does not possess the ability to comprehend this on a conceptual level, and the cherry-picking of examples of an economist to support her viewpoint only seeks to disprove it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwendy. Other comments?
I have a comment.
Looking for open mic, so please bear with me. And your name now?
Becky Bevelacka. Hello?
Mr. Kraus, I believe Ms. Bevelacka's got the floor. Ms. Bevelacka, your name and address.
Okay, my name is Becky Bevelacka.
It just appeared.
Okay, and I'm a Hilltown Township resident. Okay. I'd just like to take a moment to speak in support of Joan Cullen, not only as a leader in this district, but as an upstanding member of the community. She has been zeroed in on in a very calculated way by certain groups in the district, and they're attempting to use their collective power to overthrow an active member of our community for what seems to be nothing more than politics. It's a shame our children are being used as pawns in this manner. Joan's arms are and always have been wholly and fully open to every single person and child, to the point that I have seen her fret and worry and worry that she may need to limit a guest list for a party at her home or of her children's. She encourages, she encourages, she doesn't just let it be. She encourages an atmosphere for everyone. And a tweet that is being used against her, that is being used at a time when there is social unrest, I find as disgusting. She has a right to her opinion, and it is not unheard and unheard of opinion. She has acknowledged that she understands that racism does exist. However, the statement she has retweeted denounces that there is a calculated system in place in this country that is used to purposely hold a section of the population down. She stated that she does not believe that to be true. She stated that she does not believe that that system is in place, and there is a large body of citizens of all ethnic backgrounds that agree with her on this. Her belief is meant to empower. And I just wanted to also add here that, yes, there is improvements in the Pen Ridge School District that need to be worked upon most definitely. You will not find me working against that. And, you know, my point here is the politics that have been brought to the table rather than the discussion. And that is what is of most important. I back Joan. I know her personally. I've known her. I've raised my kids with her. I've known her for 15 years that I've been here. And I ask that any one of you sit down with her, sit down with me, and discuss, because that is what needs to happen here, is all of this, because this district can be better. And I fully believe with all the discussions that are happening right now, it will be better. I have my, you know, issues with the district as well. But I just think that we're going to go into a positive direction from here. I just ask that, I ask that the politics be removed.
Thank you, Ms. Bevelacka.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, who would like to speak?
Okay.
Thank you. Michelle in Matney County, East Rock Hill. We have three grown children who have been through Pen Ridge, and we have one child who is about to enter North Middle School. My husband has a few things to say. I would just like to put out there that it is really time for white people to be quiet and listen to the people of color in our community. You don't get to have an opinion on this. Listen to Dante, listen to Alexis. And there was a wonderful opportunity on Saturday for many of you to come out and hear those stories, and no one took advantage of that, and it's very disappointing. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Thank you for giving us this time to speak. Couple of things that I just want to point out, things that were said. First, Dr. Thompson had said that everybody gets a voice, any kind of opinion that they want, without penalty. However, in March of 2018, 225 students walked out of school, protested gun violence, and they were all sentenced to detention, Saturday detention. So for a school board member to make the point that somebody can, you know, voice their opinion without punishment, but they prove that they can't do that, it's just hypocrite. With that being said, First Amendment rights, everybody gets a First Amendment right. The First Amendment right protects you from imprisonment from your opinion. It does not protect you from repercussions based on the statements that you make. And the statements that Joan Cullen made wasn't just one tweet. For all you people that are saying it's one tweet that were cherry, there was multitude of tweets. I've been calling for her resignation for the past two years because there's been a multitude of tweets that she's made that are against just about everything, not just what's going on now. And this is not political. This is not political at all. This is, this is real life. This is real life, not for me, as somebody who grew up with white privilege. This is life for people of color that have to deal with this every single day. For us to just dismiss it and say, oh, well, it's not systemic, or it's not this, or it's not that, who are you to say what it is? You don't, you don't ever have to deal with it. You're a white woman or a white man who's making these statements. Our curriculum does not reflect diversity. And you listened to stories, especially last Saturday, when you talked about people that just graduated Pen Ridge or are still in Pen Ridge and what they learned, you know, about African-Americans and the battle that they have been fighting for 400 years. It's so minute. How can anybody say Joan Cullen should remain as the vice president of curriculum when she doesn't want to diversify our curriculum? We're just setting our children back because they don't get to learn everybody's perspective by having her as the vice president of curriculum. You can't, you can't say that posting something outside of the school board won't reflect on how you perform as a school board member. Those are your beliefs. You posted them. It didn't have to be as part of the school board. You posted that these are your beliefs. Well, those beliefs are against everything that any of us should believe in. So for you to say, oh, well, I did this outside of the school board, that's okay. That's not okay. Because it does reflect on you, it does reflect on you as a person. And right now, that person needs to be removed from vice president. She should now be the head of curriculum, and we should call for a recall vote so that she has to design her position.
Sir, thank you very much. I appreciate your time is up.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir, please. My name's Craig Edwards. I have three kids that graduated Pen Ridge. I live in Bedminster Township. My fourth child is at North Middle School right now. And I've been in this district since 1982. So it's been a while. That tells you kind of how old I am. So I appreciate everybody's perspective here, and I've watched this school district for a long time. The problem is that we mix up a lot of our definitions and a lot of our terms here. Of course, everybody has a First Amendment right. Joan's no different. But the big question, if Joan had said something that was truly offensive, a year ago, she retweeted a black man's post that she agreed with. She's referencing Thomas Sowell, who's a brilliant black man who agrees with Joan. There are many other black people in America that agree with the perspective that there is no systemic racism, which has a very specific definition, which is different from saying there is no racism. Okay, we all agree there's racism, and when you find it and you point it out, we should all attack it together. It's an offensive thing to all of us. Even though I'm not black, it's still offensive to me. I grew up in Papua New Guinea. I was the minority where I grew up. So I experience stuff myself, but that's not relevant to this point, I suppose. What Joan said about systemic racism has to be looked at intellectually without the emotion. I feel like so many people are worked up because they want something to be angry about. They're upset about what's going on in the world. They're upset about this cop who did a heinous thing. We all agree it was him. We need to root it out where we find it. If there is systemic racism, we need to call it out specifically. Systemic means top-down. What government policy, what school board policy, what police policy is there that promotes race discrimination? Either from the top-down or from a movement, a group movement. That's the issue. We need to have an intellectual discussion about it without all the emotion and the vitriol and the ad hominem attacks at people. I've known Joan for a few years. I don't know her that well, but I know enough to know Joan's certainly not a racist. If you get to know Joan, you'll know that too. If you can relax and stop the attacking and allow the conversation to happen, outside the obvious fact that she has a First Amendment right to say what she says, right? What she said was not wrong. What she said was accurate, okay? Now, you could disagree with me. You could disagree with Joan, and we could have a great conversation about it. I'm willing to listen to find out where the systemic racism is. Not racism. You give examples of specific acts of racism, and we agree that's bad. But systemically, where is the racism? And that's the question. Thomas Sowell addresses it. There's many intellectual people who talk about this. This is a discussion we can have. But to remove somebody from their position because they took a...
Mr. Edwards, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
I would like to speak.
All right. Is it Ms. Thomas?
Yes, Jalisa Thomas. My family's in Rock Hill. So I just continue to become educated about my ancestors who fought and died for me to be able to have a voice in the rights I have because of their courage. And they were so courageous, and I too need to be just as courageous, and so to do some of you. First, I'm just still unsure about how a person in this country, but yet a leader of a community and a leader of youth can be just so ill-educated on issues that have remained present in this country for the past 401 years. You know, does one not realize that America has enslaved black people beginning in 1619 and until the Emancipation Proclamation was passed in 1863? And that our country was built physically, economically, institutionally, and systemically based on that, and that being racism? And actually, just because the Emancipation Proclamation was passed in 1863 doesn't even mean that all persons were enslaved, were set free. We know that's not the truth, hence Juneteenth, although most of us just found out what this holiday was because of the lack of education we have received across America and including at Pen Ridge. Then finally, when Black Americans are considered to be free, 1865 begins the year of Black Codes, and then not too much later comes Jim Crow laws, which continue to allow our country to systemically perpetuate racist policies and laws and ways of life. Once the Jim Crow era ended in 1964, this was followed by a criminal justice system that disproportionately affects the black community in America called mass incarceration. And then we're here today in 2020 watching black people be senselessly murdered and having to tell people that black lives... Having to tell people that black lives matter. And, you know, and I don't even have time to go into, go on about systemic racism present in systems of education, public health, housing, and employment. But there are plenty of books that people should read, websites, evidence, you know, like facts that show this. So again, I just can't fathom how one can say that systemic racism doesn't exist. It's like mind-blowing to me. Or tries to state an opinion that suggests otherwise. Facts are facts, and opinions are opinions. And this isn't a political movement. This is a human right issue. And how privileged one must be to be able to say that it's political. And I think to the people who are here tonight, I think we've come to realize how important it is to pay attention to who our leaders are and who we're voting in. What are their values? What do they stand for? It's also important to pay attention to what we are being taught, who was picking and choosing what we're being taught. You know, we must demand change in our curriculum to include the truth. And to include the truth is going to force a lot of people to rethink how they thought and what they've been taught and to confront their own miseducation. You know, it will be a difficult process, but that doesn't mean we don't do it. We must always stand for what is right and for the truth and for an education system that actually educates and isn't guided by white supremacy.
Ma'am, I'm afraid your time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I just wanted to add, I do agree with the motion of removal for the vice president of the school board, Joan Cullen. I believe that one cannot have a role in education if they're going to ignore facts.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Schmidt, you're unmuted. Do you have a comment?
Yeah. So I just want to send a very genuine thanks to Ryan Gerhart and Lisa Walters.
Mr. Schmidt, could you suspend, please? Would you please announce your name and where you're from?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Chris Schmidt, Percacy.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. So I just want to send a very, very genuine thanks to Ryan Gerhart and Lisa Walters for obviously listening to the experiences and stories of those in the community and proving this in their actions tonight. I have known Lisa specifically for a really long time, and if there's one thing I know, it is that she values every single community member's experience. And in calling for Joan Cullen to step down, she has very much proven this. As is reflected from his statements tonight, it's quite evident that this is also true of Ryan Gerhart. So I would like to include that in the event that the motion passes and Joan Cullen is no longer vice president, as someone who voted for Lisa Walters to be on this school board, I support Lisa Walters taking that position in her place as I believe Lisa is able to genuinely listen to community members and make decisions that benefit students of every skin color, every gender, every sexual orientation, and any other identity. Thank you for all you do, Lisa. And thank you to Ryan Gerhart for moving to remove Joan Cullen from her position.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Kraus, this is Ruth Fields. I would like to speak. I have my hand raised for a while now.
Yes, Ms. Fields, your photo is out. All I see is your name, so I apologize. So go ahead, please. Ms. Fields, your name and municipality?
My name is Ruth Fields. I'm in Hilltown Township as well. I'm calling, let me, there's an echo, so let me finish this. I'm speaking once again. Last meeting, we had this come... I'm speaking once again. Last meeting, we had this, we had the same conversation regarding Joan, Joan Cullen. We talked about why we feel the way that we feel. This is not a political agenda, as someone mentioned. This is more than a political agenda. This is about our children, our children of color that are being impacted by them. The students that gave their testimonials are not talking about some made-up racism or some systemic racism that does not exist. This is what they lived with in this Penridge School District. I moved into the Penridge School District. I did not come from the Penridge School District, but the stories that I've heard, I no longer want my children to be exposed to that. We want a change. And this is why we have come to you over and over and over again, asking for real initiatives, real change to happen, not the, the workforce initiatives that, about the hiring practices that you guys are planning on doing. Actions speak louder than words. Make it happen. Include us in this process. I'm gonna yield my time because my husband is also here, and he wants to speak as well.
Hello, everyone. My name is Said Fields and Hilltown Township. Someone, someone mentioned earlier the blatant denial of systemic racism. I, I just say to that person or persons, having an intellectual conversation when you can't recognize that I can't change my skin color or my seven children can't change their skin color is a problem. Things need to change. And for those who are in support of, whether or not you support the removal of this person, you, you support it, great. If you don't support it, great. What I'm concerned about are my three boys that are going to this, that are going to be going to this school district, and what will their plight be like as they matriculate through school? That's an issue when people think that there's no such thing as systemic racism. Mr. King said it perfectly. Dante King said it perfectly. He cannot remove his skin. I can't change this. My three black sons can't change their skin color. They will be met with some form of racism. We try to shield them from it, but for how long? And it sounds like it's an inevitability if things stay the way that they are. So I'm voting for change. I'm hoping for change. You don't want to believe in systemic racism. You want to quote a few black people who don't believe that there's systemic racism? I don't know how they were raised. I know how I was raised. I know that when I go, when I get pulled over, I know when I get pulled over and someone else gets pulled over, it's a different situation when I get pulled over by a police officer. Or what I have to teach my boys when they get pulled, when, when they're out and how they need to interact in the street if they're, if they're at the encounter of a police officer. So please stop speaking from a place of privilege when you have no idea what it's like to live in this skin. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Hi, my name is Janelle Hobbs. I'm from Hilltown Township, and Joan is entitled to her opinion. What I am most concerned with is the curriculum. There's no way she can be partial with her views. It needs to change as far as the curriculum, a non-racist curriculum that teaches the real history of the United States, of Black and Brown people and how we've been suppressed. And part of that history is systematic racism. To say that there's no systematic racism is to downplay and to say that every person of color who gave a testimony or told their story on these phone calls and that these rallies are lying. As Mr. King stated, we can't turn off our Black and Brown skin. We live with it every day. Our concern is our children, and the racism that they will face in the school is inevitable that they will by some of the current students and some of the alumni. I charge you guys to make a change, educate the teachers. I've spoken to parent school teachers. They don't feel as though that they've been properly educated. They don't think that they've actually received the equity and inclusion and diversity training. Hire someone real, who's, who's talented in that area, who has the credentials in that area, to educate your staff on what is needed for our children. It's time for a change. You guys have people standing behind you who's willing to help you. I'm a master's prepared social worker. I'm an advocate by heart. This is what I do. And I'm not going to be silenced. I'm going to continue to speak up. I'm going to continue to send the emails. I'm going to continue to call until there is a change. If each one of you have to be voted out during the next election, that is what will happen, okay? I, I appreciate whoever brought the motion to remove Joan. She definitely needs to be removed as the curriculum director. I yield my time.
I would like to speak.
And, okay. Allison?
Hi, I'm Allison Prisky.
Municipality, please.
I'm Allison Prisky. I live in Sellersville. I grew up in Percasie. I'm actually in the same neighborhood as some of the members of the board here today. I wanted to start off by thanking the people of color who have spoken up on this call and have continued to come out every weekend to share their terrible and horrible experiences that they have had in this community and on, in this school. I want to thank Ryan and Lisa for their motions and for clearly listening to some of the people who have spoke. And I want to say I'm disgusted by the wishy-washy statements of other members of the board and their unwillingness to listen. None of you showed up on Saturday. None of you. And as someone who grew up in the Penridge School District, I feel I was done a disservice about learning, about Black history, about the history of Native Americans in this country. And I don't see how a woman like Joan Cullen, who is in charge of the curriculum, can make positive changes. How is she going to educate these students on Jim Crow? How is she going to educate these students on mass incarceration? How is she going to educate these students on voter suppression if she does not believe systemic racism exists? And my last point is, it's not an opinion. This is fact. This is what's happening in our country. It's not an opinion, and it's not politics. It's obvious. Why do not, why is our community so limited with diversity? You think that's by coincidence? You think that's just because people don't want to live here? There has been suppression of people of color in this country. There is suppression of people of color in this community, and I'm disgusted by the silence and unwillingness to listen, and I would like to call for Joan Cullen's resignation.
Thank you, Allison.
I would like to speak.
And that's Holly Labelle?
Yes, Holly Labelle, Sellersville Borough. I am also a Penridge alumni. I graduated in two thousand. I currently have a child in school there going into his junior year, a person of color. I want to address the progress that is being made in regards to the policies and procedures that are being implemented regarding discrimination that's happening at Penridge. I understand that's why the Diversity and Equity Work Group was created, and I appreciate, excuse me, all the updates that have been sent. What I want to talk about right now, though, is that I know we can do more, and we need to do more sooner. We need to set the bar higher for us, and we need to work hard to achieve bigger goals than we currently have set. We need to be proactive and to be teaching anti-racism, anti-sexism, and anti-homophobia to children of all ages in our school. These teachings are as equally, if not more important, a step as improving the curriculum and implementing diversity and equity programs. We know that the Penridge School District is capable of faster progress. We've seen it. There is no reason why progress for such an important matter should be slow and calculated. A pandemic swept across the globe this year, and Penridge was so quick to act, make decisions, and adjust their strategies to deal with this unforeseen circumstance for a district that included thousands of people. We saw the district's response time. We know how capable you are of mobilizing and acting immediately when needed. Penridge has the opportunity, the capability, and more importantly, the need to make these significant and progressive changes in our school district. We are watching as other school districts around the nation and locally, right in PA, make much larger strides to effect great changes in their district. And we are looking to you, the school board, and wondering why we aren't at the head of the pack. After witnessing firsthand how quick this district can act when they have to, we can't help but wonder why it's moving so slow when it comes to this. What kind of message is that sending to us? It's hard to be Penridge proud when Penridge is so woefully behind on such a critical issue. We aren't discussing semantics here. This isn't a political issue. It's a humanitarian issue. These are human beings we're talking about. These are our children. We have a responsibility to do what's right for them and right for others. I also call for Joan Cullen to step down from her position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labelle. Other folks who would like to comment?
I would, I would like to speak.
Okay. Tina, you're less than a municipality?
So my name's Tina Daly. My kids go to Grass, and I'm from Sellersville. Um, I just want to thank the, some of the board members really went out of their way to meet with a couple of people in the community. And I just want to thank them for what they have done, and I know this hasn't been an easy week for them. I think what Dante said is really important. I don't, I don't think it's whether or not, you know, Joan chooses to resign or not. I think the dignified thing would be to resign. I think good leaders have to understand that they, they make mistakes. But they make mistakes, and then they admit them. They make mistakes, and then they learn from them, you know, like, and if you're not open to learning, which I think in this time is really important, if you're not open to learning or changing your heart, then I think that that's a different story. And the other thing is, I think that this meeting has been focused around, you know, what are we, like, what to do with Ms. Cullen? But really, like, there's a much more important issue at hand, and Dante spoke to that. And it's funny because I think that, you know, just now, like, people are starting to talk and have these conversations. But like, within your own community, you have people that are super experienced in feeling like that they've been judged, feeling like their voices aren't being heard. And I, I, I want to thank Dr. Bolton, but at the same time, like, my email responses, it was almost like, well, this is a learning opportunity for Mrs. Cullen. I'm sorry, like, um, we don't, like, that's not my job. Nor is it the job of the community right now to be educating somebody who's supposed to be a leader. So I just want to commend Lisa and Ryan for what they've done, and I also want to say thank you to people in the community who have reached out to them, and that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a comment.
Other comments? That's Ashley?
Yeah, Ashley Renaud, Hilltown Township. So I am an immigrant to this country, but I never get harassed about it because I'm white. I benefit from white privilege and white supremacy and systemic racism every single day. I've lived in this country for eighteen years. And I can say, every day I've probably been treated better than actual Americans and actual American citizens who are residents of Penridge, who have spoken here on this Zoom call. And it's not because, I, I've heard, so I had, I saw so many people say, we want to, like, hunt out racism and squash it. Racism is not a bunch of ants under the floor, floorboards. It's the air we breathe. And because of that, I was an immigrant, walked right into this country after college, and the red carpet was rolled out for me. And I got to, I've got to see over and over people who claim patriotism, claim to love this country, who really, really only love people with fair enough skin here. And for me to benefit from that over and over, when we have people in our community who have to re-traumatize themselves in order to be heard, from the one, one commenter said, it's, it's en vogue to be looking at these issues. I think it's en vogue to actually believe black people. And these people who are bravely coming, coming up, coming to this meeting, sharing these stories over and over with us, that's re-traumatizing for them. But they are doing that because they want us to finally listen and finally hear. We would never, ever have to see a white man being, having his neck, his neck knelt on for almost nine minutes in order to believe that he was hurt unjustly. But that is what is necessary to mobilize people in this country because they are so blind to the oppression of people of color. It is so commonplace. It is the air that they have breathed their whole life that they are blind to it. And we have an opportunity here in this district to say, okay, are we going to start believing the children in this district? Or are we going to wait a whole another generation or another couple generations before we actually say that we believe them? And that we believe their experiences and that we are going to shape our community and the learning of our children and the education of them in order to make sure all voices are heard and that all lives are valued.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
I'd like to speak.
Hold on one second. Is it, is, Dre?
Yeah, my name's Andrea K. I'm from Sellersville.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Um, just a quick and brief things. I would like to thank everybody who has shared their narratives and who have come out to all of the local community gatherings and also additionally to the school board members and which who have been willing to listen and start these conversations. And in addition, I would like to thank the members of our community in which I've been fighting this fight for a very long time, much tension. That is, I think, the number one thing in which we need is, I think the, an apology is maybe too much to ask for, but I think it admittance, at least from the school board and a collective statement, that there have been instances in this district in which have not been dealt with, have not been heard. And that is the absolute bare minimum in which we of, as a community are requiring, and it is rather necessary that you make a collective statement. That being said, making sure that there is an accountability system before the twenty twenty and twenty-one school, just, school year, excuse me, be set in place and not to wait until the fall or October or November to have all staff be educated and have an in-service day. Like, there should not be an optional committee or a program or a training session for all people to, or for all staff to attend. It should be mandatory. And lastly, to speak on the gentleman who asked that all motion be redacted from these conversations regarding systemic racism, asking for, you know, proof where these things have gone. It is very, very hard to do so, and I absolutely agree that there must be some discourse in order to have these conversations. However, to ask, who are we to tell somebody that their emotions are invalid? That is the most inhumane thing to say that your experience is not real, and I don't believe you. And therefore, to remove the emotion from this conversation is near impossible because these are lived experiences, these are lived emotions, and I do call for Mrs. Cullen to resign her position, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other comments?
I'd like to speak, please.
Mr. Greeney?
Hi, my name is Lenny Greeney, and I'm a resident of Hilltown Township. And I just wanted to go on the record, based on the last meeting where I was quoted in a local newspaper. It identified my role and position that I referenced as the Director of Special Ed with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. And I just want to be clear that I am not speaking on behalf of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit in any way, shape, or form. I'm speaking as a resident of the district and using my experiences in life and the current role that I, leadership role that I have in an educational organization to help form my opinions. So I have a couple of questions from the presentation that Dr. Bolton shared earlier tonight. And if I heard things correctly, and I'm going to go back and listen to the recording, I heard that staff and parents, students are going to be part of these community forums. We do have members of the community, myself included, and my family, who do not have children in any of the schools. I stated that the last I represent and don't speak for the LGBTQ community, but I am a member of that community. And I also am in a marriage where my husband is of a minority, an Asian Pacific Islander. So I, I have two, two lenses at which I'm looking at things. I would like to volunteer my time to be party that's being helped or being formed to address the issues in the district. And I too care about the district, the community that we live in, and I don't want it to become a place that says, don't go live in the Penridge community because of X, Y, and... don't go live in the Penridge community because of X, Y, and... I also have a question about, will the board be participating in those trainings that were referenced earlier by Dr. Bolton? Because I think it's imperative, even based, forced on the conversation tonight, that they'll be educated in those discussions. I feel that I have information that can be helpful, being a member of the LGBTQ community and in an interracial relationship. My prior experiences in educational settings in the Los Angeles area, in multiple school districts, I think that will bring value to the community. I also want to express some disappointment with some of the board members. And I wanted, before I share the disappointment, I want to acknowledge Mr. Gerhart and Ms. Walters for their genuine, authentic, empathetic responses. They were V to the conversations. I could feel the feelings coming through the phone. I want to take Mrs. Venus Clemens up on her offer to work together for the good of the district. And again, ask that the district invite people that don't have students in the district to the table. I would also like to reinforce the statement of I don't see color. That just is another example of an unconscious bias.
Mr. Greeney, I'm terribly sorry, but your time is up.
Let me just run, if I can just wrap that up.
Mr. Greeney, you have a second here.
And just follow up with the quotes or saying, believe somebody when they speak the first time, don't ask them to prove it again. And I stand by my requests to have Mrs. Cullen resign from her role as the Vice President of the School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Greeney.
Thank you, Mr. Greeney. Okay, other comments?
I would like to say something.
Is that the Ms. Nugent?
Yeah, my name's Sarah Noon. I live in Sellersville. I just wanted to bring up the fact that there's an abundance of empirical evidence that denotes the existence of systemic racism in public education. That includes the over-identification of people of color within special education, and also the disproportionate instances of suspensions and expulsions among people of color. And I really suspect that Penridge is not exempt from that. That being said, I think it is, you know, really important that Penridge adopts a curriculum that reflects anti-racism. And I can't see how that can be done without acknowledging the existence of systemic racism. That's why I want to thank Lisa and Ryan for their motion asking Joan, for Joan Cullen's resignation. So thank you to them.
Thank you. Other comments? I'm scanning.
I'd like to comment.
So please bear with me. Who do I have? Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I just wanted, my name is Kenny Chapman. I have, I'm from Hilltown. I have two boys in a school district, one in Grass and the other at Central Middle School. And I just wanted to recognize and amplify what the story that Ms. Alexis Thomas told. It shook me to my core, really scared me, and I think it should scare everybody on the board of what she had to go through. My son, you know, he was, he came home and told me that kids would make fun of his skin color, told him his skin was the color of poop. You know, he has his hair braided. They made fun of his hair. My older son saw the N-word in the bathroom one time. So those microaggressions pile up, and it leads down a path that Ms. Thomas went through. And I think that we should take action to make sure that that doesn't happen in our community again. As far as Ms. Cullen, the board is talking about the First Amendment, but that didn't apply to the Penridge students who walked out. Ms. Cullen tweeted, retweeted somebody that called those students misinformed, barks at truant peers. So if that type of language is used to describe the students, I believe she should have been in a leadership position. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Other comments?
I have a comment.
On Kylie, Kieran?
Yes, yes.
Okay, your full name and municipality, please.
Yep, I'm Kiri Hupka. I lived in Sellersville.
Okay.
I'm also an attorney, and I want to say that I think it sets an extremely harmful and dangerous precedent to call for Joan Cullen's resignation on the basis of her political opinions. This is exactly what our constitution protects against. What social media policy did she violate? I'm curious. Because I've looked, and there's no such policy for school board members. And she's not the only person in this community who doesn't believe that America is systemically racist. She's far from the only person. Never once have I seen her trivialize any instance of racism. I've seen her acknowledge every single one. I've also personally heard her speak about the injustice of Mr. George Floyd's murder. I've heard her repeatedly say that she believes every single voice in our community matters. I've also seen her walk the walk and talk the talk on many occasions. I've seen her willingly endure hours of personal attacks, all while remaining respectful and open to every one of them. What we're facing here seems to me to be an ideological struggle between people who want to tear down the systems in our country by any means necessary, all the way down to the itty-bitty local level of the Penridge School Board. And then there are those of us who want to preserve, improve, and conserve the noble principles that this country stands for. The very principles that allow us to have the open conversation here tonight. I also want to say that as a female attorney, I've experienced many instances of sexism. I majored in gender and women's studies because of it. I've done pro bono work for rape victims, for sex trafficking victims, for victims of horrific sex crimes. I've also survived sexual assault myself. I've been derided and mocked for my sex, both for being too female and for not being female enough. But you know what? I still agree, and I echo Joan Cullen's statement, that systemic sexism doesn't exist. I agree, because the entire intent of her statement, as it applies to sex and race, is that personal responsibility, ambition, and dedication matter the most. That victim identity damages the person who adopts it. The American dream is alive and well in my heart and in the hearts of many. And I just want to add to my comment that it's extremely transparent that board members who didn't support Joan Cullen for Vice President initially and community members who attempted to launch an initiative that failed last election are many of the same people attempting to pounce on this opportunity to call for her removal. It's transparent, shameful, and frankly, it's embarrassing.
Thank you, Ms. Hupka. Other comments?
I would like to comment.
Ms. Yathers?
Samantha Yathers, Hilltown Township. In my, I graduated in 2017. In my experience at Penridge, Penridge was reactive rather than proactive on pretty much every issue. And the reason when we would ask, I was Vice President for our council, Homecoming Queen, all those things. I was heavily involved. When we would go and ask for things to be done, we were told that they couldn't happen because we live in a conservative community. So we couldn't discuss consent. We couldn't discuss safe sex. We couldn't discuss LGBTQ plus rights. We couldn't discuss these things because we live in a conservative community. And so what I would say to that is, first of all, these are things that your students are dealing with. As a survivor at college, my rapist is not in jail, and that is for the reason that he is a wealthy white man. Sexism on a systemic level exists specifically in our judicial system, specifically in our communities where we say it doesn't. There are so many instances that people have given at Penridge High School where black students have been called down to the office for when something happened and white students were not, even though in the end it was found out that a white student had stolen something from the locker room or something like that. We had security guards who specifically targeted black students while I was a student there, specifically targeted certain students, a specific student who at the time was not just dealing with being a black student in a predominantly white school, but was also homeless at the time. And we had that security guard. We tried to get that situation resolved with the principal and the superintendent at the time, and it was shoved under the carpet. And so what I would say is, and Ms. Cullen's opinions aside, because she may tweet what she would like, there needs to be diversity training at Penridge High School. There needs to be discussion about things that may not go over very well with everyone in our community, because they're important. Like I said, discussions about things that affect our students. I didn't hear the word consent my entire career at Penridge High School. It was discussed when I got to college. That should be discussed in middle school. That is so important. And we had so many instances of students who were sexually assaulted at Penridge High School, and it was never discussed. We had students who completed the act of suicide when we were at Penridge High School, and it was never discussed. We never had counselors, grief counselors brought in following the deaths of students or alumni. Those are things that need to happen at Penridge High School. It starts with difficult discussions about all these things, about race, about LGBTQ rights, and it needs to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Yathers.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have something to say.
Ms. Bob, do you mind if I go to Carolyn?
Oh, for it.
All right. Carolyn, if you could, the full name and municipality, please.
Thank you, Bob, for that. My name is Carolyn Sharino. I'm from Hilltown Township. I am a member of this community. I'm Hispanic. We have Hispanic family. I have two kids that currently are in elementary school and two other kids to go in. I just wanted to say that I'm a very strong believer that diversity education needs to be in our elementary, middle, and high school. Right now, I just have my elementary kids, and it scares me to hear what I'm hearing that these high schoolers have experienced and continue to experience. And it's something that I do not want my kids or any of our kids to have to go through. So I did hear that Dr. Bolton was saying that they are working, and just like someone else said earlier, is that it's, we need to work it quickly, quickly. We can't wait for something, for other kids to be experiencing this. It just really shouldn't happen in our community. I definitely also agree with another person that said that the teachers should have to get diversity training. It's much needed in our school. And I'm also a firm believer that diversity is also something, education of diversity comes from the home. It really is something that, you know, we have to, whether it's a education we provide to parents, because it's not just the school's responsibility, but it really is the family's responsibility. I know that I myself teach my children about what it is to be Colombian, so that they get that education. So that's really what I wanted to add. And I also wanted to thank you, the board members, for letting us speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you have, you've been patiently waiting.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So a lot of sharing tonight.
I got to stop you. Name and municipality, please.
Sure. Bob Sellers, East Rock Hill. A lot of sharing tonight, and, and I wanted to say Dante, you kept it, you kept it real. To be honest with everybody, I'm more comfortable under a car or a farm tractor as opposed to talking, so bear with me. So right off the bat, I'm a conservative. And before everybody walks away, because I know already that you can see I'm white, and I've already been told I really don't have a voice here tonight. And I've been told that I don't have any experiences. I can tell you that for 15 years, I rehabbed homes down in Kensington in Philadelphia. And I wouldn't have labeled myself as a conservative then, but it was in rehabbing them and seeing the single black women with their children that went into these homes that I felt good about, but I also came to the realization that it was highlighting broken families and not having a father and a mother together, having a strong family. Because if they had that, they wouldn't have been entitled to that government home. And that made me sad. So the last two homes that I rehabbed, I donated to church down in Kensington. So I don't know if that counts as an experience or not, but that's, I wanted to share that. So what I'm hearing tonight is there's stories about Penridge School. Oh, here's the other thing. The other thing is, I have about five pages of things I want to read, but I have to tell you, and I guess I'll direct this to Dante, because I'm scared to read them, being a conservative, that my voice doesn't matter.
Mr. Sellers, you have 39 seconds left, and I really need you to talk to the chair, not to any other person. It's the rule. Thank you.
Sure. Yep. So I'll just get right to it. So we can all agree there are acts of racism and hatred that still exist in America. We all agree as Americans, we condemn, we can condemn it, and that we have no place for it. The issue that was brought up was about systematic. I'm a conservative, so I have entirely different philosophy and ideology that people have here as it relates to systematic or non-systematic. So that's the fork in the road, okay? And on the one hand, the left believes that the American...
Mr. Sellers, I'm terribly sorry. I apologize. Everyone's got three minutes.
Sure, let me, let me just say. Thank you for sharing, everybody. I do support Joan. There are elections. Elections do matter, and if there's, if you want to change the board, that's why we have elections.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, thank you. I am Robbie Fisher from West Rock Hill Township. I just wanted to say that I support the motion that has been brought up. And thank you to Ms. Walters and Mr. Gerhart, and thank you for, everybody for speaking up. Adding on to what Mr. Chapman and others have said regarding the First Amendment to the whole board, or rather, to the president. Please stop using the right to free speech to hide your discomfort or unwillingness to disagree with the statement that systemic racism doesn't exist. And I hate talking about tweets, but you can just come out with it. And Ms. Cullen can say what she wants, but so can you.
Mr. Fisher, you're out of order. Now, please make your point without being personally attacking the president.
Well, it matters what the community knows, or it matters that the community knows exactly how you feel about this. And I'd like the young people of Penridge to know how you are proud of this being your legacy. I heard that some of you say you have zero tolerance for racism in Penridge. And I'd like to hear those policies and how you plan to strengthen them, because now's your chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Would I also like to make a comment?
I would.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
I'd like to address each member of the board with the following, yes?
Name, your full name and municipality, please.
Emily Smith, East Rock Hill.
Okay.
I'd like to address each member of the board with the following question. Should there be a no vote on the motion to remove Mrs. Cullen? What kind of message does that send to our community? If possible, I'd appreciate an answer during the questions and comments section of the vote. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And to be honest, I'm not going to comment on that before the vote. Okay, any other?
I'd like to take.
Mr. Hogan?
Yep, thanks. Joshua Hogan, West Rock Hill Township. I would like to ask the same exact question of the board, and I'd like to get an answer in the same period. If Ms. Cullen is removed, what message does that send to members of the community who share her opinion? I want to mention that, you know, I moved here to the East Coast when I was in my twenties, and I grew up in California. I spent, as a white kid, I spent many years as the only white kid in my classroom. As some of you probably know, California is probably the most diverse place on the planet. In that capacity, I experienced racism both ways. I was punished for, you know, racist actions of myself onto other people, including blacks. And I had people get punished because they were racist to me. My experience in California, being an extreme minority as a white person, is shockingly similar to what I'm experiencing and listening to here. similar to what I'm experiencing and listening to here when we're in a community that's, you know, what, 90% plus white in Penridge. It's always the same tactics. It's destroy, don't build, the same way that statues are being torn down right now. There's no constructive conversation here going on. There's just two sides, people yelling at each other. I fully support Joan Cullen to maintain her position. I agree with what was said earlier, that this is a very transparent attempt by people who already didn't vote for her to just do the same thing. I really question the message that's sent if somebody is punished for sharing such an innocuous, non-offensive opinion. I mean, look, if you disagree with the opinion, disagree with the opinion. We've clearly heard that. Everybody in the community has heard that. But to be shouting people down because they disagree with that opinion, again, that happened when I was 10 years old in California as the only white kid. They were still doing it, even then. So, you know, where does it end? Where does this madness end? You're going to remove Joan? You're going to topple a statue? What, how far is it going to go? And when are we finally going to be rid of this madness? I think it's very interesting that as the years have gone by, America has just become progressively more and more racist. I don't know why that could possibly be.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Anybody else like to add a comment?
I would like to speak.
And that's Katie Renee, your full name and municipality, please.
Katie Renee Percocie Burrow. Every board member who spoke this evening noted their commitment to the students and to an inclusive education. I see no productive way forward in which the board has the trust of the community to deal with issues of discrimination if Ms. Cullen is to remain in her role of Vice President and Curriculum Chair. I support the motion to remove Ms. Cullen from her leadership roles on the board. I thank Mr. Gerhart and Mrs. Walters for this first step to regaining the community's trust and to prioritizing a positive experience for all students. I look forward to being actively involved in making Penridge a district that we can all be proud of. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to comment?
I would. I would.
And hold on, I'm looking to see who's on mute, so please bear with me.
I don't think I'm on mute.
So please unmute. Okay, Mr. Avender?
My name is Michael-
Mr. Avender?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, okay. First name's Michael, last name Avender, Hilltown Township. So I would kind of, I am a graduate of Penridge High School, 2013, and I am a clinical social worker that lives in the area and provides services in the area. I think that it would be setting a really harmful precedent to allow someone that is perpetuating the idea that systemic racism, homophobia, transphobia, sexism do not exist when we know to the contrary, based on all evidence that it does, and we do not want to deny the experiences of those folks, especially survivors. So I think it is important when we think about trickle-down policies to think about who is going to be affected by those, and that is, those are the younger folks. So if we think about precedents and we do not call for the resignation of Joan Cullen, then what does it mean to the next kid who is the victim of discrimination, of racism, and let's not even call it microaggressions, we will call it racial abuse, because microaggression is a euphemism. So I think that in order for us to heal and move forward as a community and to support all members of our communities, because we are not thriving and we are not healing if anybody in the community is feeling discriminated against or prejudiced against, I think that we have to call for and support the resignation of Joan Cullen, so that we are making sure that we're a community where people feel safe to be who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avender. Other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Mr. Clifton?
Sure. Charles Clifton, Sellersville. We've heard a lot tonight about freedom of expression. We've heard that, you know, Joan Cullen has the right to speak her mind. We've heard that policies that monitor and penalize expression are a violation of our rights. We want to see robust discussion take place. On June 19th, the district posted on its official Facebook page a small blurb honoring Juneteenth, June 19th, the official end of slavery in the United States. So I post, I saw this, and I posted a reply, which I will read. I posted, "Good start. Maybe the district should also respond directly to the concerns expressed at the last board meeting regarding the insensitive comments, insensitive comments on social media and social media policy." I'd also like to hear from Dr. Bolton or Mr. Kraus, and I would like to hear them say without reservation that in Penridge, Black Lives Matter. This post was immediately removed, was taken down, censored. The posts of two other community members were also removed. And they weren't profane, they weren't defamatory, they were just like district residents expressing their opinions on social media, just like Ms. Cullen was expressing her opinions on social media, her opinions that there's no systemic racism, that there's, you know, we should question climate change science, et cetera. So the question is like, why is freedom of expression only for those who are in power, only for those that control the conversation? So let me just take, you know, the time here to ask that question directly to you, Mr. Kraus, that was taken down. And let me ask you directly, are you willing, in your role as president of the board here tonight, without reservation, without qualification, to say that in Penridge, Black Lives Matter? It's okay to say that.
Mr. 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 Clifton?
It's okay to say that. I heard the mayor of Souderton say that just a few weeks-
You are, you, you can make a comment. You are not permitted to ask questions.
So it's okay to say that. I heard the mayor of Souderton say that just a couple of weeks ago. Can we say those words? Can we say those words? I love this community, and for my community's sake, I hope that we, I hope that we can say those words. Now, yield my time, and I hope that we do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Anybody else like to make a comment?
I would.
And, sir, you are?
I am Jay Jones, Percocie, Pennsylvania. He is redundant. I'll try to do this in three minutes. You know, I am first and foremost about these children. First of all, when you, when you talk about Thomas Sowell, you have to know the man, including his articles, he is extremely homophobic, and it just, it, it's kind of more evident that it's surprising to people or people post when a, a, a black man has hate speech. And I, I understand freedom of speech and the First Amendment. I'll start with that. You know, he consistently brings up the same topics. He doesn't really talk too much about, he specifically is about policy, not the implementation of the policy. He haggles over systemic versus structural racism, right? He's a brilliant man, there's no doubt, and I agree with some of the things he says. But he doesn't come into the fact with things like the GI Bill after World War II, mass incarceration, okay? So I, I guess we're going to start teaching financial literacy, and we're all for charter schools now, since we're, we're talking about Thomas Sowell. Okay? He, he continues to talk about how black people choose the wrong majors, and that's the true reason for the wealth gap. Well, one of the majors he says black people choose is teaching, which is correct. Where are our black teachers in Penridge? And again, the next quote from Thomas Sowell, it's really a paraphrase, is not directed towards what is currently going to be done in Penridge. I applaud those efforts. And again, this is about the kids. To paraphrase him, I know he was talking about the welfare state, but his, his comment was to the effect that intentions are good, but results are bad. So clearly, if the community at North Penn, or excuse me, at Penridge feels this way, the people of color, then again, intentions may be good, but the results are very, very bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other comments?
I'd like to make a comment, a question.
Who does it?
Adam Bensic, East Rock Hill. So we heard about the, the diversity committee that was, that Dr. Bolton brought up earlier. I was wondering, we also saw something that said that it's been around since 2018, and I was wondering if it's, are there any minutes, or is there any policy recommendations or anything that have been pushed from that since it's been around for almost two years? So yeah, that, I also support Lisa and Ryan's statements from earlier, and I thank them for being brave enough to come forward and speak out.
Thank you, Ms. Bensic.
I have a statement. This is Adrian King.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Sure. Go for it.
Mrs. King. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So I'll just follow up on the last point that, that Adam made around, you know, the diversity workforce, you know, being around since 2018. We really don't have another two years to see any progress. And so I would, I would just echo the comments of the folks that have, have asked for an urgency. The fact that we could have a special meeting to talk about our summer activities and not have a special meeting to progress this conversation forward, so that the community can move, move forward together, and so that we can start in a better place the beginning of next school season than how we're ending this school season, is really appalling to me. And I, I, I really want to thank Ryan and Lisa for taking a step forward and, and moving into a very uncomfortable place, I'm sure. But I would like to, to, to thank you both, you know, for taking that step. And I do agree for the call, for the, for the stepping down of Ms. Cullen as the Vice President, as the Curriculum Chair, but also as the Personnel Chair. Nobody's mentioned that piece of it. If we're talking about bringing diverse talent into this community, I do not want someone with those type of thoughts sitting on that, sitting on that committee. And for those that have suggested sitting down and talking with Joan, my husband and I did that. Joan participated in a board, in a special one-off board meeting with my husband and I and a few other board members, as we talked about the racial events that my daughter was subjected to as a second grader. She's eight years old. Joan chose at the end of that meeting to totally provide a tone-deaf response, that we were focusing too much on race, and that because we were doing that, we may suffer unintended consequences. Well, you know what? My child was attacked because of her race, and so we have to focus on that. There is no way that we cannot do that. And the tone-deaf responses that we continue to get from the board, where they will not acknowledge a race, they will not say Black Lives Matter, they will not say they're, acknowledge that they have a black community. That is harmful. It's harmful, and it's supportive of the type of rhetoric that we keep hearing that is not helping to move this district forward.
Thank you, Ms. King. The comments?
Hi, can I jump in?
Ms. Lakecap, is it?
Yep, Andrea Lakecap, West Rock Hill Township. I, I would also like to agree with the resignation of Joan Cullen. I know, I'm going to bring up a comment that she made on Twitter. She has to understand, and all of the board needs to understand, that her comments are being seen by students and can be seen as dangerous to the welfare of our students, and closing off conversations that could be had to help protect them. So I'd like to bring up a comment that she made, granted, seven years ago, but is now floating around Facebook at the moment. And it was in response to an ABC post about President Obama suggests election gave him some political capital to borrow a term on tax rates. And I quote her, "Glad prez is so gleeful about his impending rape of my family," end quote. I think that is inappropriate, insensitive, disgusting, and it shows the type of attitude and opinion she may show about major issues. So I, I urge the board to be brave enough, and thank you to the, to the have already stepped forward and understand that she's representing a community on her Facebook, on her Twitter, on her, out in the community. And I think it's just ridiculous that comments like that are being made, and they are being circulated, and students can see them at the moment. And among some of her, you know, other recent comments, I just think that if I can get her off of the school board where she's making decisions about personnel, curricula, and other very important items, I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Lakecap. Are there other comments?
Sure, I'll take it.
So, okay. Your name and municipality, sir?
Yes, this is Ed Sharp. I am East Rock Hill, and I've been listening to this thing for, for most of it. My wife's been here the entire time. What stands out to me is that the, the conversation has wandered, but you get right back to, for me, several things. Facts matter. The curriculum matters, that you can't make individuals, the non-majority individuals, disappear from history. They are there, and unfortunately, so many people miss it. This is about the kids. Education of Black history is going to happen for my kids. It's not a question. It's going to happen for my kids, because it's at least going to come from me. The sad part is that many of your kids are not going to get it. That, to them, when that's left out, that's a disadvantage for your kids. This is about my kids, but it's also about your kids. Your kids not understanding diversity is a disadvantage. Your kids, all the kids in Penridge are disadvantaged by the ignorance of fact. So if you could call it politics, if you could call civil rights, if you could call the things that matter, that should matter to all of us, politics, then you really have the wrong perspective. So the fact that an educator, someone who calls themselves an educator, can say things like systematic racism doesn't exist, simply says that person is ignorant of fact, it doesn't say anything more to me than simple ignorance. So I do echo, echo the statement that there must be a sense of urgency, that you need to start now. You can't keep waiting, you can't keep having the wrong, bad discussions. You need to start now and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Kraus, I'll speak if there's still time.
Mr. Kraus?
One second, Mr. Rush.
Yeah, before Mr. Rush goes forward with his three minutes, I just want to remind everyone that we've suspended the general rule that there's an hour of discussion. We've gone way beyond that. We're headed towards our two-hour mark. So it is the prerogative of the chair and the board to, to hear comment, and Mr. Rush will get his three minutes, but I'd ask everyone to be relatively economical with their time. Thank you, Mr. Rush, for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Mr. Miller, I'm sorry. Mr. Rush, please. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I, people don't believe this of me, but I honestly try not to come to a meeting with an agenda to speak or not to speak. And I broke my rule tonight. I was just going to listen and not speak. And when my heart starts pounding through my chest, and a voice goes through my head, that my words are not mine, but they're coming from someplace else, I usually just decide to speak. I'm not a Quaker, but I'm into a lot of Quaker meetings, and the Quakers always say that, you know, there's some spirit sometimes and some energy that moves through human beings that is not of that person. My guess that the best move tonight, and I have, by the way, I've been here my entire life, I'm from Percocie, I was born in Bloomingland, graduated in '72, and a very proud member of the Wall of Fame in Penridge High School. I think the best move tonight is to table this vote. It's too important. There's too many accusations flying around. It's too filled with energy, and you can call a special meeting anytime you choose. And I think the best thing is for everybody to take a breath, go to sleep. My father's, my father's advice was always go to bed and sleep on it. Sleep on it and wake up and make a better decision. I do not think it's a good move to make this vote tonight. There's been a tremendous amount of people speaking, and there's probably 10 times that many that are in the community that don't even know this meeting is happening. And there's probably 10 times that many that are in the community that don't even know this meeting is happening tonight. So in, in defense of Joan and her position about being asked to, to witness this vote tonight in public, I think that people need to take a breath and sleep on it. And I think it should call another special meeting. I think that the person who said that if we had a special meeting for sports, this is one of the most important meetings, I think, in the history of our district going forward into this decade. And I really think the best move would be to sleep on this and, uh, and table this vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. All right, so folks, it's approaching, um, an hour and three quarters right now, are there other comments? From the community?
I'd like to make a comment if I, if I may.
And, okay, your name, sir, I mean, Ms. Palbichar?
My name is Thomas McBride from Sellersville. So with a lot of the testimonies that have been made tonight, you know, and with an intention of path moving forward, I'd just like to highlight that this is, you know, something that is prevalent in our school district in all grade levels. Uh, it does occur in the elementary level, definitely has become prevalent in the middle school level. My children are young and haven't been at the high school level, but, uh, based upon other testimonies from kids in the community, it's prevalent as well. So in your consideration of a path moving forward, I ask that, you know, the board considers a, uh, a, a policy that would be through all levels of school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Uh, I have a quick question.
Ms. Hoppy, is it?
Yes, um, Shannon Hoppy of Sellersville?
Okay.
Mine is, can we think about possibly banning the Confederate flag on school grounds? It's a controversial symbol of hate. And that, that's it.
Ms. Ms. Hoppy, um, I'm going to break my general rule about not answering questions during comment time. I am recently engaged in researching that issue, and we'll be discussing it with the superintendent and the board. That's all I can say right now.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you, Ms. Hoppy. Other, other comments? Okay, I don't hear anybody speaking up, and I don't, oh. Oops, okay.
Are you able to hear me? Melissa Prisky?
Yeah, Melissa, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but you've spoken already once in this comment period?
I did not, my sister did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, so my name is Melissa Prisky, and my family's from East Rock Hill Township. Uh, as my sister stated, we live in the same neighborhood as some of the board members. I would also like to echo, um, that I have witnessed, not personally myself, because I am white, but I have witnessed and heard the narrative and heard the discussions at not only the three, um, Black Lighter, Black Lives Matter protests and gatherings that we've had that the school board was invited to, but also we're just talking to, um, friends over years of my entire life in Percasie, as well as my career in Pen Ridge High School. So this is not a new issue, this is not an issue that is invoked. This is an issue that permeated our community. Systemic racism shows, and systemic homophobia and systemic sexism are a strength throughout our community. If you look at the board, it is all white members. There are 50% females in our community, I'm assuming. There are only three, four members on the board, as well as teachers. There is no black teachers in the Pen Ridge School District. That is also showing systemic racism. The reason that we need to educate on anti-racism, and we need to have a diversity, um, curric- uh, curriculum that is focused on diversity education for the teachers as well as the students, is because of the accounts of the people that spoke up today, and is on their experiences with racism, but also the people have spoke up and have denied that systemic racism occurs in our community, and have denied that, um, that systemic racism only happens in our community, but directly in our school district. I think that diversity education will be very beneficial to not just black students, but of course to many white students that have, that are the majority of our communities, that we don't continue to have some of the opinions of community members who decide, who, who determine and state that they are going to deny that systemic racism is present in our community, in our country, and in, um, the world, to be honest. So I also believe that, um, your comments can be made, your free speech, but it does not come without consequence. Uh, as a teacher in a neighboring school district, if I say something that goes against the school code or the school values, I am going to also have consequences. And I believe that Joan Cullen's statements were racist, and that it should go against what the values of the school board and the school district as a whole are. And thank you to Ryan, um, and the other board member, Lisa, who were brave enough to, um, make the movement or motion for her removal. And I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I apologize, folks, but, um, I'm going to, um, begin into public comment at this time. Mr. Miller, do you have anything to add?
I do, um, and, and I, and I, I think it's instructive. Um, I just want to remind, um, everyone that, um, the motion is, as I understand it, to remove Ms. Cullen from the vice president's position and from the chair of the curriculum committee. The vice president motion is in order. The decision of who is a chair is, under Board Policy 005, a decision for the president of the board to make. Um, and so I'm going to, and, and it is not, um, subject to, uh, uh, by board policy, a vote of the board, but I'm going to suggest that Mr. Gerhart's motion is intended to be a suggestion to the president that he consider to do so, and I think that's consistent with Mr. Gerhart's intent. Secondly, um, I think it's also instructive. I've heard some comments about the curriculum chair and so on and so forth. And I just, uh, before the board members comment, before we proceed to applaud, I'd ask, um, Dr. Bolton to address the role of the curri- curriculum chair, which is different than, um, the professionals who do curriculum instruction in the school district. It's my understanding the curriculum chair serves more as a facilitator than as someone who actually selects curriculum. And I think everyone's been, um, very, very polite and very, very engaging this evening. And I appreciate everyone making it easy on the timekeeper referee slash umpire. So thank you very much for that. But I think it's instructive and maybe helpful to the discussion and debate to outline the, the respective roles of what a curriculum chair on a board does versus what a curriculum, um, a person who's tasked with curriculum instruction does at the, at the district. I know that may be a little granular, but Dr. Bolton, with that incredible setup, could you, you know, add a couple comments?
For Mr. Miller, thank you. And you're correct, that, that all of our committee chairs, this isn't true just for curriculum. Just like the finance chair does not construct the budget, just like the personnel chair does not hire employees, the curriculum chair does not participate in the writing of curriculum. All votes that have to do with any of the items that I just mentioned, whether it's hiring or budget or curriculum, are done by all board members and are voted on by all nine board members. They are not voted on, um, at chair and committee meetings. The chairs do, in fact, as you said, facilitate meetings, so they are the ones to keep the meetings going, make sure the agenda is followed, and ask any questions that may come from that standpoint. All of our curriculum work, as you said, is done by our curriculum experts, our teachers, our supervisors, and our administrators. So thank you, Mr. Miller, for that clarification.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kraus, I believe there's a motion second on the floor, and board members have the right to comment and then take a vote.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Mr. Miller and Dr. Bolton. So board members, um, are there comments or questions from board members?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. I'd like to just go back to a few things that have been said. The word opinion is being used a lot. And when I share the, the word perspective, that doesn't mean to imply that there are no facts behind, um, what these people think, the opinions that I'm sharing. There are indeed facts to support the argument against the term. And to borrow from Senator Scott, once again, he said that it's kind of like what Mr. King was saying, that you shouldn't be quibbling over the meaning of a word, and we're getting lost in the meanings of words. But he said, for the idea of systemic racism, meaning that our country as a whole is racist, our country is not a racist country, is what he said. And that's the spirit of what I am, um, sharing with all of you. And once again, there are facts and strong arguments to be made and voices to be heard. As I mentioned in my statement, there are different theories, like Mr. Sellers started to allude to, but he ran out of time, are different theories about the causes. There are different theories about what can be done for the minority communities. Um, and so to me, that's all that's being suggest, suggested, is that we have a good discussion. And I agree with many people who said it, this is not the place to have that discussion. But to say that there aren't any facts behind it, I think is inaccurate. I'd also like to just correct the record that I've never once said, again, that racism doesn't exist. And I also want to make sure to be clear that I completely agree with diversity and equity being addressed from kindergarten through 12th grade through college. You know, that's not a position that I ever presented as something that I would advocate for. And I do, on the topic of advocacy, I do advocate for members of many underrepresented, of underrepresented communities. And I take a bit of exception to the, you know, description of me as not being an advocate for all people. I am.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mrs. Cullen, can I ask you to limit your comments to the motion, please?
Okay, so for the motion, I'll just reiterate that, as some people have already asked, if you are to say that a person who presents a point of view that, again, is backed up by factual information and is a, an opinion held by many, if you were to say that if you hold that position, you should have to revoke positions of leadership because of it, I think the message it sends to our community is, number one, that their voice is not welcome. And number two, it sends a message to students that you should always be careful to not let your opinion be known, even if it's backed up with facts, because you too could be asked to give up something that you worked hard for and that you earned. And I think that that would be a terrible message to send to students.
Board members? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, I'm checking everybody's, I don't see anybody unmuted or... And Mrs. Baines Clemens, I don't see your icon, so, okay, there you are. Okay, you're, you're muted, okay? All right, um, we're going to do the same way?
Kraus, it would be probably in order at this point to have a roll call vote.
Okay, all right. Then we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Chenoweth, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bass Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Cormack?
Hey.
Mrs. Cullen?
No.
Mrs. Don's not here. Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Mr. Rice?
No.
Dr. Thompson?
No.
And Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails, five three. So with that, um, we'll move to the next agenda item, which I believe is the announcements. The next regular school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 24th, at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for participating. Truly appreciate everyone's comments, questions, concerns raised here tonight. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.